We will call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Jennifer, can we get a roll call, please?
Rachel? Bob Incher?
Here.
Miss Oliver?
Here.
Phil? Dr. Bishop?
Here.
Ms. Unicorn?
Here.
Ms. Yu?
Here.
Great, and we have quorum. First thing on the agenda is the consent agenda. Is there anything that anyone would like to pull out and move to new business? I can't see everyone, this is hard. Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Some.
Thanks, Jennifer, can I get a second? Thanks, Barbara. Can we get a roll call?
Mr. Bob Incher?
Yes.
Ms. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Dr. Bishop?
Yes.
Ms. Unicorn?
Yes.
Ms. Yu?
Yes.
Great, and moving on to public comment. I see no public this evening, so we will move right into staff reports.
Wonderful, so hi, everyone, welcome to the interactive classroom. As you know, we're in a temp location this month, so the friends at the library can set up in Civic for their book sale, which is tomorrow and Saturday. So if you have cash that is burping a hole in your wallet, don't forget to come back. And it is both a wonderful and a very dangerous thing that happens several times a year. Very excited about it. I also wanted to mention a couple other things before I turn things over to Phil. One, we had our Culvers dine and share, Anna sets up for the foundation, and we had several hundred dollars that we received for the Library Foundation. And so we appreciate everyone's support in going out and, you know, making the self-sacrifice to have some frozen yogurt or a hamburger and help support the library. Oh, I'm so sorry, custard. Thank you.
It's a Wisconsin thing, I just don't want people getting out of it.
Yeah, no, that's a good point, that would be, yes, custard. See, you learn something new every day. I also wanted to just mention, I put this in my report, but I have been appointed to the Illinois Library Association Public Policy Committee, which is really exciting. This is the committee that reviews any legislation that is proposed and also seeks to propose legislation that benefits libraries and also monitors legislation that can be beneficial and also legislation that might be less so to libraries. So it's a three-year appointment, and I'm very excited because I feel like we have some really great opportunities right now with our Secretary of State, Secretary Genoulius, who's such a strong library supporter, to really do some impactful things to help Illinois libraries. So we had our first meeting this week, and I think that we have lots of really good ideas. One of which is to, I'm working on putting in a proposal for legislation that we, to hopefully have ILA support, that we can get the same thing that the schools got, which is free internet. Kelly has done an amazing amount of work on putting together information on the impact that that bill that was passed last year has had on us. As a public library, the Secretary of State's office has really been listening. She's spoken with a couple people there, it was a while ago now, I mean, the spring.
Right.
And so they really have this on their radar as well. And I think that it is very much something that we know is such a critical part of our services and being able to save some money, not just for us, but for the 600-plus other public libraries in the state, where we are sometimes such a lifeline for people, to be able to access key resources that are only available with internet. And so this is something that we're, hopefully will be a priority for the year. But I will be probably doing more updates on public policy stuff just because I will have a deeper knowledge than I've gotten from the updates and things. And if any of you are ever interested in any of that, I'm more than happy to talk more about it. And we'll most likely be asking the board to help with reaching out to our most wonderful legislators. We're really lucky because we have really fabulous legislators, and they have already said that they want to support libraries in whatever way they can. So I think that this will be, hopefully, a really positive and wonderful thing. I also wanted to mention just two other things. One, as you know, in the consent agenda, we had the Cook County United Against Hate Resolution. Thank you so much for passing that. I wanted to thank Trustee Bishop. They had, I don't remember where it was you were at, you were at a thing.
Was that the Glendale Summer Fest?
It was Glendale Summer Fest. And one of the, one of Commissioner Britton's staff was like, "Why hasn't the library done this?" I was like, "We did look at it," and then we didn't. We are partnering with the Community Relations Commission, as well as Cook County, as well as CATCH, this September to do a program here at the library in the auditorium. We're going to be featuring the documentary Upstanders. I'll be putting it in the board packet next month, but it is on September 22 at 3:00 PM. And I would invite all of the board members to come. We're also inviting Commissioner Britton to come to our next board meeting just to share that we passed the resolution and hopefully do a picture. I'm still waiting to find out if he's available. But stay tuned for that news as well.
We should point out that Commissioner Britton will also be moderating the panel after the recent film.
Yes. It's looked like an amazing, I haven't seen the film yet, so but we'll see in September. It looks really good, though, and very positive, right? It's not like, "Stop," it's more like, "Start doing this to make the world better."
Yeah, I think it really delivers its message very well, and I think, I hope that we'll get a wide audience and lots of attention.
I think because we have such a wide cross-section of community partners working on this together, that it's hitting different audiences, which is really, really wonderful. I also wanted to just do a really short presentation on the magazine info that we had talked, I don't remember who asked about it last month, but last month when we were talking about Cirque Stade. Was it you, Jamie? Fabulous, okay, well, I hope, I did a little bit, I know I put some stuff in the packet. And full disclosure, most of the information that I'm about to share, I received from Phil Collins, who is in charge of our periodicals, as well as Brian Nelson, who is on the board of our Digital Library Consortium, which is another one of our. So hopefully I will represent the data that they have given me in a positive way. But I also told Phil, I'm like, "If there's something that gets asked, he is here as our subject matter expert." So just to remind you, this was the same thing I showed you last month. This is actually our physical magazine checkouts. And of course, we have seen a decrease in these. What is interesting is that we have seen an overall increase in magazine checkouts. Downloadable checkouts have been increasing, as you can see, for the last several years compared to our physical checkouts. I did some cost comparisons. So we spend about $24,000 a year on our physical magazines. This includes magazines, newspapers, we do a lot of financial newsletters. And when you take the number of checkouts, it averages out to about $2.40 per checkout. Now, the average cost per issue usually is between $5 and $7. This is obviously, there's a wide range, but that's the average. So we're still, even though it is higher for print checkouts, we're still delivering a value, for every dollar that we're bringing in, returning $3 in value, or three times the value to our community. Downloadable checkouts, however, are actually much cheaper. It's about 22 cents per checkout. And Phil kindly pulled, we have two different magazine, downloadable magazine vendors, Flipster and Overdrive, otherwise known as Libby, which is what a lot of people call it. Flipster has select magazines, and the reason we don't have just one platform is because some magazines, like these three, which are very popular, are not available in Overdrive. So we still have two platforms, and as you can see here, just like with eBooks, the digital price is significantly higher. The good news is that more people are checking them out. So the cost per item is, as you can see, oh, I didn't type it in. It's supposed to be $1.70 per checkout for this one? That's my bad, I obviously can't type. So it's $1.70, which is cheaper than the physical checkouts. But when you factor in that they are more expensive, it's still, we feel, is giving us good value for our money, but is something to pay attention to as physical magazines continue to shutter their doors and not be published.
So we have to specify the number of items that are available in the platform? And then you pay through, if you want to have three of the time available, you're paying, what, $600 effectively to have three time, is that what you're saying?
No, so we subscribe to that title for the flat fee, and then it's available to patrons simultaneously, so.
Okay, so in all words, when you say that 17 per checkout, you're just...
Yeah, $1.70 per checkout is, I took the total amount that we paid to Flipster annually, and I divided it by the total number of checkouts we had in Flipster. And I don't know, I didn't look and see, and I don't even know if that's something we can get of like, how many people are checking it out at the same time?
Well, I can say, I mean, it's really not an apples-to-apples comparison because you may have fewer checkouts physical, partly because there's only two physical copies available.
Yes. That's a really good point.
But that doesn't mean it's less cost-effective, it just means that...
Right, it's, this is even more efficient. Although I will say that we don't allow new magazines to be checked out, and people come in and read them, and we don't, we don't have a good way of tracking that without making people like go to the desk and get, and we...
We track them when we find them, but I know we're not finding every in-house...
So, and then for, oh no, it was 17 cents a checkout. I, sorry, guys, this was correct. It's $1.11 for Overdrive. So we have access through Overdrive. We buy, we pay as part of our, we have, there's 80 libraries in the consortium. We pay to Overdrive $80,000 a year, which includes our platform fee, which includes the money for eBooks and, as well as magazines. Our magazine portion for Northbrook Library for Overdrive is $1,212.12. Last year, we had just over 1,000 checkouts, which averages out to about $1.11 per checkout. These, just like Flipster, are always available and simultaneous checkouts. These, they're, you know, so if you have 10 people checking out The New Yorker, great. These are what Overdrive considers across the nation to be their 10 most popular magazines. And they also consider magazines that are like one-off specials of like, you know, sometimes like National Geographic will do like, they include that in that 300-plus as well. So, so we're definitely, we spend less on the Overdrive magazines, but actually have a higher per-checkout cost because the magazines that are only available in Flipster are still so popular. Or at least, I'm making an assumption, so. And just as a reminder, I showed this last month, but you can see that from 2017, fiscal year 2017 to 2024, we've seen a 300% increase, which, okay, that's not accurate, I did not represent that. We've seen an increase in our overall circulation with magazines and newspapers. It now accounts for 3%, which is still a relatively small number. And when you consider that all told, we spend, I can't get my... We spend about, sorry, I don't have my notes thing up where I had my like total amounts, and I'm trying to add 4,400 plus 24,000, so we'll say 28,400 total. And that is less than, we spend about $1 million a year on materials. So we're getting good bang for our buck. And I did ask Phil and Brian, because I could not remember the last time that I read a magazine, and then I felt guilty. And I'm like, "Oh, well, when was the last time you guys have been, we couldn't, none of us could remember?"
Not very often, yeah.
But for people that do read them, this is very much, as you can see, still a well-used service. And what I think is interesting is that we are seeing the shift to downloadables, which in the long run, we might end up seeing be a more cost-effective way of providing this to people. So I'm happy to answer any questions on these. And Phil is also super excited to answer random questions.
I'll ask a couple of them. Are there any annual limits on the checkouts that at some point in time they charge more? Or is this like unlimited in terms of checkouts?
So there is some cap, but we have not reached a cap on these checkouts. Yeah, so it's, it's set very, very high, but we have not run into that issue yet.
So, I mean, it really seems like, you know, the more you market it, the better the economics get.
One of the things that Linda has been doing is not just, we, we used to focus on marketing, like, "Check out magazines." And, and we've really shifted, or are working on shifting, I should say, and doing more targeted, like, looking for Time Magazine? You can check it out in Flipster, so that people know, like, because if you just say, "Check out a magazine," but if you're like, "Oh, do you want to read Forbes?", you can go here and get it. So, and I think that that helps too. And I think it also shows, though, that there are still people that want the physical.
Yeah, yeah. And our investment business section is very popular, too. We have those split out physically, but then Forbes was one of the ones that was not available in Overdrive that we have in our physical business section. So I know people are enjoying having it on some digital platform as well.
So if you want to read the most recent article, you can download it right now on Flipster.
Several of those publications have paywalls on the actual publication website. So it's, it's good to know that, you know, it's available through...
And I wish that there was an easier way to communicate that to people because it isn't like a totally seamless process. It's not like you can enter your library card on the paywall and it'll get it to you. You have to go into the app, download the article, you know. And so I know some people have said that that is, that is a barrier, which is why what we are getting with The New York Times is so exciting. Oh, I don't know.
It is nice, if you scan, we, Overdrive, if you go in and flag a magazine, it will tell you every time there's a new issue, as someone who reads magazines.
How do you?
I get notified every time there's a New Yorker. And I love The New York, so it was very exciting to find that.
I'm gonna, but I'm gonna look, we're gonna just, we're gonna liberate it really quick, and then we're gonna see if anyone has any other questions.
Are we getting to New York Times next, or is that what I'm...
Yep, that is what is happening right now. So hang on, I'm gonna pass things over to Phil. Oh, and just, sorry, I should have, Phil Collins is our Adult Services Supervisor, and, and started with us along...
Yeah, eight years, seven years, yeah.
And started as our techno, well, started as a substitute librarian, then technology librarian, and now is a supervisor and is in charge of all of our periodicals and newspapers. So this is a beautiful blend of the old and the new.
Right, yeah. Well, thanks, and thanks for having me. Definitely excited to share, this is our newest e-Resources. And the thing that's really exciting about the way that New York Times offers this is pretty unique. Patrons have a chance to access The New York Times website and apps as if they were an actual subscriber, as opposed to kind of going through a separate library database. So what they do, they still come to our website, they still come through us to get their access, but then they get their daily access, and they can go on to all these wonderful products that The New York Times has. So this includes all their news, their games like Wordle, Spelling Bee, all that stuff, their cooking recipes. They also have a couple things that I think not everybody knows about. Wirecutter is something that's similar to Consumer Reports. They independently test products and things like that and do ratings and reviews. And then The Athletic is a sports website app that New York Times purchased a few years back. And this is somewhere where a lot of the top sports journalists are these days. And so it's, it's a really great standalone app that you also get access to with this New York Times program. So what I'm gonna do is demonstrate how patrons actually go about accessing this, both from inside the library and then from, from home. So to start off with, I'm gonna go ahead and show live accessing this from inside the library. I'm gonna go to our website, northbrook.info. And if you're a regular user of this and you're getting familiar with it, you can also, in the library, just go straight to nytimes.com. But you can come through our library website, it's right under Download. There's a link straight to New York Times Digital Access. It's also listed in our e-Ressources pages, along with the other digital newspaper offerings. But I'll go ahead and click on New York Times Digital Access. It's gonna tell me all about it. What I'm looking for is access to New York Times online inside the library. And I'm gonna tap or click here, this is just gonna take me straight to nytimes.com. So from our end, this is authenticating based on IP address and our Wi-Fi. So it recognizes, okay, you're in the Northbrook Library building. They've signed up for this, so you get access. So inside the library, it is available to any patron in the library. They do need to sign into their New York Times account. And so this is a free account, if they don't have one yet, they can go ahead and sign up. Sorry, I'm gonna log you up, so...
It's totally okay.
Okay.
That's fine.
So, you know, if you start reading, you might hit the paywall, but you just go to log in, and you can either create a new account or you can sign into your existing account. So I'm gonna go ahead and sign into my test account here just to show how to go ahead and log in. Okay, I might have to... That's okay. Um, let's go ahead and...
Do you do an incognito window?
Oh, thanks, that's a good idea. Okay, so let's just jump back to the Times. Signing in with my test account. And I'm good to go, so I can go ahead and start browsing. And at this point, once I have signed in the first time of the day, I can also go ahead and sign in on any of the apps with the same account. It's good for 24-hour access. So if I want to come back in tomorrow, I just need to go through this process again and sign in again to get the fresh 24 hours. All right, so yeah, any articles I read will go ahead and let me continue through. So what I'll do is flip over to show how to access this outside the library. And for outside the library, I'm just gonna show a short video to, to go ahead and play the video. Okay.
Hey, Patrick, any ideas?
Is it logged into your Google Drive, Phil, do you need to...
Um, yeah, let me, let's do that real quick, sorry about that.
Oh, you, I got it.
I got, it took me, I'm like, "What do you mean?" They did just release all of the previous Wordles, so you can now play everything.
I don't need to know that.
I'm sorry. I mean, you might need to take a vacation just so you could Wordle it every day, all day.
All right, so here we go.
All access description remotely outside the library. So we're gonna start off on our website here, northbrook.info, and go to our e-Ressources under the Find menu. We'll search for newspapers and magazines, and scroll on down to New York Times. I can also just go to the letter pad in that list of resources. So we have two options here, New York Times Online and Online in Library Use. Of course, if I am outside the library, I want New York Times Online. I'm going to click here to log in using my library card number. Then outside the building, it is going to prompt me for my Northbrook card number. And now it's going to allow me to get to the link to get our access code. It's gonna be good for 24 hours, so I can come back and use the same process each day. I click on the link. Here's my access code, I don't need to take that down, I just click on reading. It's gonna take me over to The New York Times. Now, at this point, I can either log into my Times account, or if I don't have one yet, I can create one at this time. In this case, I do have one, I'm going to log into my test account here. And now it's telling me my code is valid. It's going to give me 24 hours of access, I click on Continue. And I can either go through and set my preferences, or I can just go on to the main New York Times homepage and start reading. I can also use any of the apps at this point with the same account. So if I click on Account, it should show I am a subscriber. And now, as I go through my new articles, James Cooking, et cetera, I'm going to be able to read the whole thing without having any limitations.
Okay, so that's how you would get into that from home, and...
How to access our New York Times.
All right, does anyone have any questions about the service?
So how new is the link that was on the dropdown menu?
That's very new. Yeah, that's like within the last day or two, so...
Did I try to ruin the weekend and didn't see that? I'm like, did I miss it completely, or... That's, that's helpful, because I had a hard time finding it, because I was just, first had a hard time finding where the resources had been moved to.
Okay.
I needed to that, because I needed to at least try and find that. So it's a good idea to put that link there.
Yeah, yeah, hopefully that makes it easy to find.
Yeah, and you can also bookmark to it so that if you don't want to have to go and click and click each time.
Right, once you get to that access code page, you can bookmark that page and just go straight there.
Have a sense of usage since it started being promoted, because last month it was still kind of...
It was very new, yeah, yeah, we weren't really pushing, yeah.
We've had, for the access codes, we've had about a couple hundred use access code redemptions, something like that. And then for in-library use, around 800 page views a month, something like that. So yeah, we're still pretty new, but I do expect that to pick up. We do have up to 5,000 codes for the year, which the rep from the Times assured us should be more than enough. So, but we'll see how, how much it picks up, so.
More than enough for the rest of the year, or more than enough for what kind of period of time?
For the rest of the year, so based on libraries...
In 12 months.
Right, oh, right, right.
Like, not through this calendar year, but for a 12-month subscription.
Okay. So, but that's 5,000 individual daily uses. So, but that's 5,000 individual daily uses, right?
Right, right, and that doesn't count in libraries, that's just redemptions of the code.
Oh, okay, so in library use is outside of that?
Yep, yep.
So if people start in the library and then go home, there's no code in...
Right, right, then they, yeah, if they don't need to get the code, they'll already be signed in.
To start your day out of my... Come here first, Jay, just pause in the parking lot before you drive to work. Right? Yeah, and do you have a sense, Phil, from those, I know again, like, it has, we haven't been super widely promoting it just yet, but like what has been the most popular pieces that people have been looking at?
Well, so far, the games are the most popular. But the news articles are up there, people are looking at each piece, like, you can kind of see out of each piece how many views it's getting from the access code. They are all getting used, but yeah, games are the most popular so far.
It's summertime, so...
Yeah, yeah.
Aren't we reading news just yet?
I mean, maybe they do. They should, right, Janet?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Phil, thank you, this is great. I think you're gonna see, I'm guessing tomorrow, a huge uptick in... I told Phil that don't be surprised if this portion of, um, the board meeting goes viral and he becomes internet famous, so...
Great, great, great.
Yeah, so, so yeah, thank you, Phil.
Alright, thank you.
And before we move on to the kind of next items, um, I did wanna just mention, so, um, we're trying a new thing where I put the stuff up on the screen and we follow along to see if this is helpful. Obviously, this room today isn't the most ideal, so, um, but we are trying it. I also wanted to point out something, um, that I don't know if everyone knows. When Jennifer sends out the packet, she hyperlinks everything, even though you can't always see it. So like if you click Staff Reports, it'll bring you down directly to my report, um, to make it hopefully a little bit easier to, um, navigate through the packet if you are trying to find something, especially in the meeting. I do have one item that I did not have in my report, um, that just came up this week. I was at, Monday, I was at the Chamber Business Expo and was speaking with a couple members from the Civic Foundation. And they, um, for those who are unaware, the original library building, which was also the original Village Hall and the police station and the fire station, has been used by Civic for a number of years and the Chamber had been renting space from it, but was owned by the Village. And, um, recently, the Village decided to sell it and they sold it to the Chamber. So the Chamber is now the owner of the building. And Civic is not going to, there's some upgrades and things, and Civic is not going to remain in that space. And so they were talking about the need for a monthly meeting room space and I had shared with them, like, well, you know, you have a library card, you can check out a meeting room, um, and reserve one. They asked if we would ever consider allowing them to use a meeting room for their monthly meeting, which is the, um, like, second Monday of the month, I wanna say like 6:30, um, and doing it more in advance than what you can do booking a room, which is about three months in advance currently. Um, and I said that that was something that I would need to discuss with the board. And so this is not an official, like, we're talking about this. It's more a, hey, this thing happened this week and to get, um, initial impressions from the board, if this is something that you would like to consider, and if so, I can bring something in August for a formal, um, presentation and have more information. If we were to consider doing this, I would expect us to have some type of memorandum of understanding or something, just kind of outlining the terms. But do you think that, given Civic's, um, long-time partnership with the library, I wanted to bring this to the board and see what you thought without, um, just immediately saying yes or no?
Absolutely. We're partners in the community. We don't have a problem.
How many people come?
They typically have about 20 people at their board meetings, they said, so most likely it would be Civic, um, but I think that it would be the Civic room, yeah. But I mean, I think we could make any of the, you know, if Civic isn't available for some reason, like, we certainly have, um, we have this space, we have our Pollock Room, um, Pollock A, Pollock B, you guys know that, I don't remember why I went to that detail. But that is, um, I think, giving them a space surely once a month, I think that that wouldn't be an issue. Any other thoughts or concerns or, um...
Any chance you could get the Park District to come and reconsider, you know, Northbrook City's being in the parking lot?
So, um, that is not something that I have any control over and it's something that I think is best left to the organizations that are in charge of those spaces.
I don't care, it's gonna be any of us.
Do we have any other groups that sort of have a standing monthly meeting here or...
The only other group that we have, we have an intergovernmental agreement with the Glenbrook Sanitary District that has their quarterly board meetings here. And so, um, annually, we get their agendas and Jennifer posts them and we book the rooms. That is the only other thing, and we have a formal intergovernmental agreement for that. But no, we do have a lot of groups that book meetings regularly. We allow 18 room bookings a year for, um, each card, so a lot of condo associations. But nothing that we have a standing.
I mean, we are partners with the Civic, you know, foundation to do this. I, I only ask because I thought, you know, a monthly meeting, is that going to, uh, in any way make it difficult for other groups or...
Right.
To get rooms.
Kate and I talked about this this afternoon and one of the things we talked about was that they would not get priority over library programs or... And that would, I mean, obviously, details need to be handed out, but...
Sure, yeah.
They don't just get to, like, claim the Civic room because their name is on it every month.
Yes, and Monday, Monday evenings in terms of library programs are, are just not, you know, that's not ever been a priority because we just have found that attendance generally isn't great. So, so in terms of library programs, I think, well, maybe occasionally, it's, Monday's the best day, I think. And it's already Thursday.
Will they give us higher, you know, marketing on their stuff?
I mean, certainly, we could look at that.
I think they would ask you.
Be like, have a...
Higher billing.
Oh, I mean...
Higher billing on Northbrook Day's advertisements?
Or, you know, bigger...
Yeah.
I don't know, for a certain level of their marketing plan?
I've not ever asked them, I don't know if they have a formal...
Get on lights.
You know, like, a lot of places, you know, if you're a dollar or a certain level, then there's what your marketing package includes. If you're, you know, a higher level, you get a bigger ad or whatever.
I think that's a great question, I can certainly talk to them about what, you know, I mean, I think certainly in-kind sponsorship. So yeah, great, well, I will, I will talk to them and bring something back next month. And, um, I'm happy to answer if anyone has any other questions on anything from my report in the board meeting. Oh, sorry, Jay, yeah, great, this is awesome!
So Kate, I couldn't help but notice on Facebook, I'm walking in the library, and it wasn't in your report, so I don't know if you have any comments on it, that Northbrook is, uh, the library's partnered with the Village to market on Northbrook's change of the, uh, waste removal service.
I did take that out of, I did not put that in my report because I felt my report was getting long and so I deleted that. Yes, that is correct. I'm gonna actually ask Kelly to speak a little bit about this because it deals with our Sustainability Commission and our efforts here at the library around sustainability.
Yes, we are partnering with the Village to provide space in our lobby so that they can prevent, present information on their new, um, waste hauler contract. So, um, I was able to attend the Sustainability Commission meeting last month and learn a lot about it. And so there, there is, the residential waste management is moving from waste management to LRS. There's gonna be different carts that folks can choose. So one of the things that hopefully next week will be here at the library, but is currently at Village Hall, are examples of what those carts can look like. So, um, you can decide if you need like a 95-gallon cart or a 65-gallon cart. The pricing's the same. There's also going to be an opt-out compost option, which is exciting. That was something that I know that Go Green and the Sustainability Commission really worked hard to get into the contract. So, um, I've heard some questions about yard waste stickers that I don't fully understand because, um, I don't deal with that at my house. But, um, but there's a little bit of confusion around that that the Village could probably address better than I can. So, um, all residents will automatically be given a cart to compost unless they opt out?
If they have their own composting, that they don't wanna use the...
Wait, I'm looking forward to see the carts because I looked online and then it was like, you know, they just said, you're getting whatever the same-sized cart is you have now. I have no idea what size car they have.
Right, right.
There, I think they are just in the lobby at Village Hall right now.
Clean new one, ooh, that's so exciting.
Deerfield has been composting now for, um, had, had composting with LRS now, I think, for maybe three or four years. And, um, John just cleaned out our compost bin. So just know that that's a thing that you should do.
There are also many local teenagers who will do that for you. Several who own businesses. Do they knock on everyone else's doors? Just mine, okay. Any other questions about staff reports or recycling or compost? Okay, great, uh, board member reports?
Well, not a week ago, I came over and dropped in on drop-in chess, um, around the services department. And I honestly did not know what to expect. I, I thought perhaps I'd see sort of two lone kids in a corner. Wow, was I wrong, it was full up with, um, young kids and teenagers helping the young kids. And a lot of young kids who didn't need the teenagers because, wow, okay, I don't even know how to play chess and these little ones were like, sit down. And it, it, they were really, it was a quiet room because they were practicing chess. But, uh, it was a full room and I was delighted.
Regular program?
It is, it is now, um, monthly and then they have a drop-in. I'm trying to remember, they started doing kind of like a family drop-in one because they were having so many of the adults, like, hey, I wanna stay. And we're like, this is for the kids. So, um, so yes, I don't know if it's monthly during the summer. It might be only a couple times during the summer, but then during the school year, it had been monthly. And I know they're planning to continue monthly. So yeah, it's been very, it's great, it's kind of like seeing a resurgence.
Yes, I mean, it was very full and very busy and quiet. But again, you know, that's where they sure knew how to play chess.
Kate, I thought we had a pretty good turnout at the July 4th Parade.
Oh my gosh. I didn't put it... Yep, we did, Jay, I did not do a good job on my report this month. You're right, we had a great turnout, we had a ton of board members, thank you all, as well as, um, a bunch of volunteers and a large number of staff. And it was, it was great. It went really well, even though the library vehicle died before.
We were great without the vehicle.
Yeah, the bubbles, the bubbles made it.
And Nimesh fixing the bubble machine.
Yes!
That was impressive.
That was, um, Linda has now made notes, so for next year, we won't have any bubble malfunctioning.
A little proper viscosity of...
Yeah, exactly.
Chemistry at the, at the July Parade.
Right?
I, and my TikTok did not go viral, I'm so sorry.
It didn't?
No.
Oh.
I'm so sorry, I tried.
It's okay, next year.
Yeah, well, next year when we have people dancing with the book carts, we'll go viral.
The board wants to do book cart dancing? That's cool!
Yes. Yeah, this is our plan next year.
I guess I should add that Stacy and I represented the library at the 5K...
Oh! Were either of you, like, winners in that?
Don't start.
Don't start.
There was an incident with our race bibs and I came in ninth place overall with a time of 20 minutes, even though it took me an hour to walk the 5K.
We both took an hour.
Janet also won her age division...
I won my age division with a time of 23 minutes.
But somehow, we crossed the finish line with Tracy Katz-Mull, who clocked in at an hour. So I don't know what Tracy did.
And I can tell you for sure, we took it at a very leisurely pace.
Didn't break a leg.
And we, as we approached the finish line, we, we sort of noticed that it was at 59 minutes and 52 seconds or something. And we thought, hey, let's make it in under an hour. And we all picked it up to a gentle trot and crossed just under...
But if you look at the Park District's official results, we won ours.
And we should point out that we both, we, we actually informed the Park District that we in no way...
Did you turn down your prize money?
Our riches, yes.
Metal, prize money, whatever. I truly, I think I laughed out loud at poor Isaac from the Park District when he called me to tell me that I had placed ninth and won my age division. So there is no way. Respectfully, no.
And I emailed to say, I'm so sorry to talk about you, not even... But we had a nice time.
We did.
Yeah.
We solved all the problems.
And we saw lots of other of our partner organization collectives there in Park District.
Good for you.
Thanks, guys.
Um, and then I was gonna share that Kate's heard enough about this, so she can hear my... My neighborhood has been experiencing ongoing internet outages for about six weeks every day. And this week, we have planned internet outage, today in fact, and I took the opportunity to remind people that the library has consistent wifi and that there are study rooms available. And several of, because we have a little neighborhood Facebook group, and several of my neighbors reached out to thank me and said they worked here today, so...
Oh, that's fabulous.
Sometimes people just need a reminder of things that are in their backyard that they don't think about when they're yelling at Xfinity.
I'm gonna need to talk to you offline and get their info because they would be great witness testimonials for our legislation stuff.
We can do that.
Cool.
Any other board member reports? Moving on to unfinished business, strategic plan implementation update.
So, as the board may recall, we've been working on the strategic plan and you approved it, um, several months ago. And so, the, um, so Anna, Kelly, Becky and I, along with the management team, have been working on putting together an activity plan. And so, um, this is just kind of the overview reminder. We have three strategic directions of connecting with our community, building an inclusive culture and creating spaces to belong. Each year, we have identified, now I went too big. We've identified, um, actions that we want to focus on that we feel will help us reach our goals, um, in each of those strategic areas. We have also, um, delineated in here kind of who will be responsible for things so we can make sure that we don't have any one person overwhelmed with too many items. And one of the things that we had, um, talked about with Amanda Standifer from Fast Forward Libraries was kind of like, how will we gauge what success looked like? And we had, um, a really robust discussion at our manager's meeting about, you know, capacity with staff and defining success and the pressure that people put on our, that we put on ourselves. And that, um, originally, the language I had was evidence of success. And, um, we ended up changing it to outcome reflections because what we really wanna focus on isn't, um, not, not that it means we can't succeed or fail, but that what we really want to do is to be thoughtful in evaluating what we're doing and whether it's having an impact. And so focusing on, we're doing this thing that we hope will result in this action and this is how we're going to be able to look at and gauge whether or not what we did moved the needle at all. So it's a slightly different wording that I think we've, you know, well, definitely than we've used before. But the items underneath it help, I think, give us a really strong, um, accountability about what we're gonna be looking at and how we're gonna be, um, reflecting on the work that we're doing. I also think, though, that it is an opportunity to, um, focus on when we don't always meet all of our goals. That's one of the things that we know is challenging and libraries have a, um, pretty strong tendency to attract perfectionists to our field. And so one of the things that we really wanted, that we wanna encourage staff in this is that, yes, we want to do all of these activities and we're not doing them just to cross things off of a list, but to make measurable change and to make a library that is meeting the needs of our community, which we already do, but again, to continue to focus on that. So, um, so each year, you'll see that we've outlined different activities and really wanna focus on making this a living document. And so each quarter... And so each quarter, my plan is to bring this back and share with the board, um, what progress we've made, where we're at with things, and then annually to have all of us look at it and say, are these still activities and goals that we want to be doing? You know, we saw this happen with our 2018 to 2021 strategic plan where we were like, yes, we're doing all the things. And then COVID and suddenly all of those things became very irrelevant. And so if something happens, we don't want this to just be a, well, but it says it in the plan, we have to do it. But to really pause and take that time for further reflection. We also, uh, Kelly and I have been working, um, with Mallory Edgar from Fifth Star Collective, who's a data analyst and data visualization expert, um, on doing a deeper dive into the qualitative data that we received through the strategic planning process, um, to help us glean even more insights and help us better target our efforts. She also.
Community survey.
Yes, what did I say? Oh, yeah, the community survey, yes. She also is working on a proposal to help us put together a data dashboard that we can use to hopefully better measure the work that we're doing with the strategic plan. And I hope to have more information on that for the next board meeting, um, to share with the board. And so I'm not going to go through and read all of these, but I am happy to, um, answer any questions. And I will say that we spent the majority, we've outlined all three years, but that we really want to focus on the year one things and know that years two and three might shift a little as we continue to reflect. But these are all things that have been identified by the staff, by the board, by the community as activities that they think are important and certainly reflect the goals that we've, that we've set. And, um, I was trying to think. No, that was it. That was all of my, everything I had. Can I answer any questions on any of these?
Barbara. I think along with, excuse me, I can't get rid of this allergy. Along with evaluating the activities or the objectives, I think it would be important to evaluate the process of evaluating. I think there are a lot of goals there and a lot of, and it may be too many. I mean, I think it's going to need to be stepped back and say, hmm, is this a good plan? Is it workable? Is it reasonable? Is it manageable? And so I think that's a separate evaluation process than just the objectives or whatever. Because I, I think that, as you said, it's a living document, which means that it's going to have highs and lows and goods and bads. So I would ask that step back and look at that process as well.
Yeah, uh, Kelly has, um, as we've talked about this, one of the things that she has repeatedly said is like, we can't make everything a project. And I really appreciate that because I have a tendency to think that like, everything is doable. And I, I really appreciate you saying that and having us really reflect on what is doable? We think that this is doable. Is it, is it doable? Are we doing too much and at what level? We tend, um, my colleague Heidi at Highland Park, who's been working with Kelly on the, some of like the, um, security stuff with the libraries, um, when she had introduced an idea, she was like, but can we not do it the Kate way? And I was like, what does that mean? And she's like, I'd like to do it the Heidi way, which means we're probably not going to be quite as thorough. We'll still do our due diligence, but we maybe don't need to do everything.
And I think that's really.
Yeah.
I think it's an evolutionary process and the only way that this is going to work. Because if it's just a series of check it off, because that's, it's, you have to keep refining.
Yep.
The living document of it.
I think you certainly have to keep refining years two and three. I mean, as you correctly did, you put most of your emphasis on year one because things do change. We don't know.
Right.
And then you, you know, um, and so I think it is appropriate as we roll forward to take a look at those year two and say,
Right, sweet. Yeah.
And it's okay to say, we can't do that now. Or this is a priority, this is not. And you have to be able to say, if it's in writing, it doesn't mean it's in stone.
Yes.
So I think it's going to be your responsibility and Kelly to make sure that this is doable.
And to not just take it on just to cross things.
Exactly.
Yep. And I think that that is something that we've definitely heard from staff, that it's so critical that we not just add. And so one of the things that, um, you saw in the board packet that we've added is like, these are all the things that we're already doing to support these goals. And remembering that this is, these are all things that each day, every day, we're spending time and attention on. And so how do we make sure that we're also reflecting on that as well? And we do want to look at like, does it still make sense to do all the things we're doing? If we want to add new things, we can't just keep adding and adding. We have to be really thoughtful in where we're spending our energy.
Kelly, you're in charge of her.
I think Kelly's going to leave if you say that, Barbara. I have a handful.
You must, I must contain her.
One key part of any strategic plan is, you know, you tend to forget when we put them together that, oh wait, we were already doing stuff all day.
Right, yep.
So it doesn't mean you aren't stretching and you aren't trying to reach new goals, but, um, all day long. Our days are full. So, um, again, I think focusing on the first year and then, yeah.
And as a board member, I'd like to know what's working. Not necessarily what you've done, but why is it working? Is it because the person in charge was the right person or not? Or was there not enough time? Or did staff complain because it was, I think it's just as important to know. So you have that information then to carry forward.
Yep.
I had two questions. One was, is this document going to be on the strategic planning part of the website?
Yes, indeed it is. Um, so tonight, board, next Thursday, staff. And then it will be up on the website after that. And then we have, um, a big rollout in the fall newsletter that has all of the, it doesn't have all the activity plans, but it has everything else. And then we'll also be working, as I said, on sharing on the strategic plan website, kind of like, how are we measuring? And, and giving those updates. So.
And then the only specific question I had, and I, and this is, I wouldn't ask these questions unless, unless they were year one questions. And that was under goal 2.2.
Okay.
The second activity, which is staff learned about AI tools. I, I wanted to ask a little bit about the outcome reflection, which to me seemed much like the actual activity. And I wondered if, um, I wondered if, I mean, as it stands, it's, it's all right as it stands. I wondered if you might want to add something like, I mean, if you're going to do this, something like, uh, you know, you've done this in many other measures, like 80% of staff who take this course indicate in post.
Increased learning.
Post evaluation, increased learning or something.
Yeah. Absolutely.
What I mean is a reasonable percentage.
That is a great idea. I, so. I mean, right, like hopefully we're all learning things for most of the things that we attend. That's a great idea. I will add that in there.
There were some things in year two or three that, um, were, you know.
Need further refinement.
Yeah, a little bit like.
Yeah, for sure.
Eighty, eighty percent of people who intended will be happy. And I, I question was, how many of these types of things will you have? But then why would you know that now? That's something to figure out.
Right. And, and we put those in as kind of like.
Places.
Correct. Like we do want to measure, but like what level of measurement and what does that actually look like? I anticipate those shifting some.
Yeah, I'm sure they will. They usually do.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Okay, great.
Any questions at the back?
All the plans for all the things. So, um, so Anna and I met with Tiffany and Dan. You have copies of this because I know it's a little hard to see on the screen, but I wanted to also be able to show kind of big picture. So as we discussed a few months ago, um, one of the things that we need to kind of hit, where to start on is the master plan. And so we, uh, reached out to Product Architecture, who's the architect that we've been working with since we, uh, since they created the plan for us in 2017. And these, um, Anna and I met with them. What I'm going to show you tonight isn't something that is, of course, written in stone. These were ideas that came out of the strategic planning process that Anna and I had. Um, and just wanted to kind of explore with Tiffany and Dan what, what the bounds are in terms of both possibilities and space, as well as from our monetary standpoint, understanding that we don't want to turn over the apple cart and completely toss the old plan, but just make some updates. And so we asked them to put together a couple of different scenarios. Full disclosure, this has not been shared with anyone on staff other than Anna and I. We will be sharing this with the management team, but wanted to just give some initial, um, but just share with the board some of our initial kind of brainstorming ideas. And our goal is that after working with staff, we'll continue working with Tiffany and Dan. And that by November, we'll have something more concrete in terms of an updated plan to be able to share with the board so that we can really hopefully, um, make a decision and move forward on the design phase of whatever we decide as our next project. One of the things that, um, it's, I think, helpful to note is that, um, we had originally subdivided things, as I told you a few months ago, into like five different projects. And one of the things that Anna and I are recommending is that we simplify that down to three. We are not asking or looking at tonight, anything in the realm of like, what projects, when, or anything like that. First, we need to like finish updating and then we will look at that. But we did include that, I did include that information in the packet, um, just so that you were aware. If you kind of think about some of the things that Anna and I have been thinking about. So this is the current existing structure. This is what you see when you walk out into the library today. Then Scheme A is the original master plan. What this had was an expanded youth services area, um, that included a middle and high school area. It also included a marketplace and moving the magazines up to the third floor, largely keeping the third floor the same, but expanding the workroom and adding ceilings, um, to the staff areas. As we know, that is, um, that is a challenge. So that, so Scheme A remains our original master plan with no changes to it. Scheme B is a bit more of a revolutionary idea. This has us moving the youth services department up to the third floor. This is something that, uh, one of the things we also asked Tiffany and Dan to look at was then having two elevators open to the public. Anna and I, um, both like the idea of containing and having it be a separate area for kids. That provides a greater level of safety of like, this is where the kids go. The little kids won't be maybe running out. We do have a number of Code Adams, which, um, is a reminder is one of our, if a child is missing, the adult can't find them. We kind of shut down the building and search for them. Having a separate area dedicated to kids would make that a little bit easier, um, make it a little bit safer. Hopefully not increase the number of unattended children, but, um, but one of the challenges is when we have programs like Storytime, where we might get a hundred people showing up, um, how do we move all of those people and strollers upstairs? So that's where having the two elevators. Even though, even so, that might still be a barrier. This is not something we've, of course, talked about with staff yet. But we wanted to explore what the possibilities were and also see about creating, um, you know, maybe zones for noise as well, which this would allow us to do. It also brings all of the, um, it puts the youth services staff upstairs and it combines the reference and, um, fiction and media staff, which currently, as you may recall, are in three separate areas into one centralized area. A lot of the other stuff kind of remains the same from the original master plan, um, in terms of spacing, like study rooms, et cetera. The next plan has, um, us moving all of the staff that are currently on the second floor and the staff that are on the third floor up to the third floor. This would allow us to have the entire second floor be patron facing and not have staff areas built into that. One of the things that this would allow us to do is to potentially, and it doesn't really show it too well just yet, but this was like the original mock-up that they gave us, um, uh, two days ago, is potentially having more seating by those open window areas and moving collections more into the center, like here where we are now, where we don't, you know, we're wasting a lot of our window light on collections. And it would be great to be able to move those collections back. This has the added bonus of having staff in one area and having the third floor be closed off to patrons, which in turn would allow for heightened security and, um, and right now, as I know I've mentioned, staff cannot leave a staff work area without going through patron areas. So all, in order to get into every staff area, you have to be in a patron area first. This would make that a little bit safer and allow it to be, um, more contained and give staff something that they have long asked for, which is natural light in some of our office areas. Cause currently, um, tech services is, um, and CIRC like, uh, like this much, get a tiny little bit of natural light. But everyone else does not. And so that would also, um, help with that. This means that youth services would be open, although that's something that we could explore of like, do we want to add a door into youth services to offer that more closed off? And that's certainly something that we could think about doing. Each of these, um, I will say that Tiffany and Dan did not run the exact cost projections on this. They said that, um, B and C would be a little bit more because you're moving more items to different floors. Before we were really just moving magazines up. This would be an increase in costs from, uh, moving materials as well as, um, just kind of shifting how things are laid out. So I'm happy to, these are still very rough, but they give you kind of the broad concepts. And depending on whether we go with the original master plan with, um, you know, a few little changes or the moving youth services up or maybe moving the staff up. These are all, um, things that we feel we can easily accommodate and plan for in our budget. If we split things up into, um, two or three projects that, that Anna has looked at the numbers and, um, we're in pretty good shape. But until we get final numbers, we didn't want to like go into that. Yeah, Jay.
When you look at the square footers on the three different proposals, you say, how much is patron centric? And how much is staff space? Is there one or another that, you know, changes dramatically that kind of balance or they pretty much.
No. They're, they're about the same. In, um, in, in B, there is a, and I didn't, they didn't give us the square footage numbers and I did not go through and add them up. There is a slight increase in staff areas from what I observed. This is just me combining the spaces from upstairs with there. It gives a little bit of a bigger footprint on the second floor, but it's a marginal amount, marginal amount. So they really tried to keep it one to one, it looked like. And I don't know. I mean, Anna has looked at it some. I didn't, without comparing numbers exactly.
I think they were, when they were doing this, they were looking at the square footage by area, Jay, and tried to keep it similar.
Yeah. So like the staff square footage area.
Well, we can ask them to provide that information in further.
Oh, for sure.
When we look at these three. Again, this was a, this was a very quick, you know.
Glorified.
We kind of asked them for.
Yes.
I'm not trying to express a preference while with the other.
No, you're just curious.
I'm just curious.
But we can ask them for that information.
Yeah, I think that would.
To explore the options.
It's hard to say is the third floor space equivalent in size to the middle of the second floor? Is it more or less?
So if it helps. Thinking about obviously the third floor, like if we took this is what we have for third floor space. And so if you take and move and flip this by its side. And so if you take and move and flip this by its side, it probably is like this much. And then we have the current third floor offices. And we do have some additional like meeting spaces on the third floor that we added just to have staff have a meeting space so they don't have to come and like lose a study room, but could meet privately. So I, I think just by eyeballing it, that it's probably pretty similar. But we'll get the exact numbers.
And looking at B versus C, just because I'd be easiest comparing front, back, the same page. The thing that struck me most about C is it almost looked like there's, maybe just the way it plays out. It's almost like more shelving in total.
There's not.
Yeah, not.
No. The shelving I looked at, because I wanted to see if they had had to reduce any of the shelving. So I actually did look at all of that. And the shelving, there is from existing a planned reduction that we had looked at based on what collections and things and like increasing large print, decreasing magazine shelving. But that they kept largely the same.
Because when we were at Glenview, there's a lot of discussion about the types of shelving.
Correct.
Front-facing, height, you know, taller versus shorter. And so that's, and you've not seen any of that in the just footage. Is that something that's also been taken into consideration as part of all this?
So we had talked about that in the original master plan. And so we knew, for instance, picture books, that we wanted to have face-out picture book shelves. It is not really clearly marked on here. We have not, and we knew that we wanted to have this kind of like marketplace, which we're, you still see this on each of the schemes. But the marketplace isn't really going to be like what we have on the first floor. It would be more like, hey, we're going to take some popular nonfiction collections and just have like all the cookbooks face out so that those are more accessible. But what exactly that will look like, we would need to go into more detail. So that is factored into here. There might be some changes as we talk about it. But the merchandising piece was something that even in the original plan, we had been looking at and factoring in. We'll want to refresh all of those numbers, of course, but.
I know it would be a bigger expense because it's already built out, but was there any discussion of really the collaboratory somewhere with more natural light?
So, great question. We originally had a Scheme D that had that. And we, they said that this would be far and away the most expensive and it would be, it, it worked less well than any of this. Like nothing really fit really well. Because of course, the whole third floor wouldn't be the collaboratory. That wouldn't work. And so like it just didn't work with adding in other things.
It would be costly because there's a lot of ventilation that we put in there. So it would add a lot of costs to the project.
Yeah.
On that note, you're not changing the size of that, which right, any of these doesn't look.
In the original master plan, the collaboratory size is slightly enlarged and that remains the case in these. It, it's hard to tell on here because you can't. So right now, the collaboratory with staff space is about 20, 200 square feet. And in the updated ones, and I realize they did, I just am looking at these and realize they don't have the square footage on here, that it is about 2,800 square feet. And so it's essentially taking the staff spaces and expanding into that and expanding the staff space as well. So it would, it would allow for an increase. It's not going to be like doubling it in size or anything. And if that is something that we want to explore, that's certainly something that we can look at. We didn't get into that level of granularity with this.
I will say, Scheme C reminds me, I don't know if anyone's ever been in the M.A.S.M.E. in the library. They have basically a suite of staff offices that's kind of behind a secure door. Doesn't mean, of course, there isn't staff on the floor serving patrons.
Right, of course.
But when I go over there to see the executive director or my counterpart over there, they're all in one place. That's why their lounge is and they're, I think that they like that.
And I'd really like to see emphasis on the children's area and making sure that the size is what we want. And it really is an exemplar. Now's, now's the time to think about what's going to make that shine.
100%. Do you have any initial reactions of kind of, or any of these, do any of these seem very unappealing?
I'm just excited that there is thinking above and beyond the confines of what is. I love it and thinking about the third floor being used entirely differently. And I, I think that's just smart.
I'm really quick. When you went over Scheme D, I thought, that's yeah. And then you went over Scheme C, I thought, yeah, that. So.
Yeah. So we need to add another third floor. Scheme B also seems to address some of the patron comments that we get on a regular basis about the noise from the children's section being so close to the study rooms. And I, that's just always hard. And children are a part of the community. Like they deserve to have space and to exist, but also their study rooms. And so I, that one's slightly appealing for that reason. And I think for the security reasons and all of that, but the traffic up to the third floor is definitely a concern. Have we considered asking? We have not.
Don't do it.
Okay, good to know. Good to know. Anything to me would be better. Our stairs terrify me. There are expenses. You can see that none of the stairs moved in any of these. The stairs all remain exactly where they are. We move around the stairs. We don't move the stairs.
In all of these, the first floor is untouched for the weekend.
Because really, we finished the first floor. If you think about it, we have updated our meeting rooms in 2015. We have done our lobby and the CIRC remodel in 2021. We did tech services and our facilities areas in 2019. The staff lounge was 2021. The only things we haven't really touched are the boiler room, I mean, aside from different systems in there, which really we wouldn't, and the IT office, which granted is, we did a light refresh on it, but that certainly, we really have covered the first floor. That part of the project is, is good.
With one exception, with the corner with the stairs, the elevator and the water feature.
Technically, that was, the corner was touched during the 2015 remodel.
Oh, let's say technically, it wasn't really dramatically changed.
No, it wasn't.
And you just, someone just raised the question of the stairs and is there any thought about to do something, doing something with that? I mean, I guess that raises a question. Put the stairs aside, the elevator, I mean, if you were to go to Scheme B, would the elevator need to be potentially upgraded in some way, shape or form in order to be able to handle a higher capacity?
I mean, I, I have talked to the elevator company about opening the doors. They, they say all we have to do is break through the wall and open the doors.
I meant the one that's next to the stairs, I mean, whether to make it bigger or faster or something that.
Well, we can't make it bigger. The shaft is the shaft.
Unless we did a new shaft.
Yeah, you know, so then you would be changing all of that. The shaft is the shaft. I don't know with the modernization project that we're going to be taking on in September, if that will change how fast the elevator moves. But that's something we need to ask about.
Yeah, Anna and I have talked about that of like, if there's a way to make it speedier. Obviously not like a high speed. That's just, but yeah. And we haven't done any testing. Like I would like to test and see what, how, like, let's say we had, how quickly could it actually, if you had multiple people? And how much of a deterrent would that be and how? Because the last thing we want is to do a major shift and then have people in the community be like, oh my gosh, I can't believe you did this. And now it's so slow and I can never get to Storytime and blah, blah. Like we don't, we don't want that. So there is definitely some user testing that we're going to need to think about if, you know, if we continue.
People movers or ramps or, I mean, because you've got walkers and wheelchairs.
Yes.
As well as strollers.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I actually said to Anna today when we were going over the is that I actually think no matter what scheme, we should consider just opening the second elevator, that that, knowing that our, we have a, a simultaneously an aging community, but we also have a lot of younger families. And so it would seem like it would be beneficial to just do that. Again, testing to see what impact would that have because we still have to move all of our carts. But it would be if we, for instance, only had collections on the second floor, if staff were only having to move them one floor, not two, that might help or it might hinder. I'm not sure. So.
Lots of good things to think about.
Conceptually, I like C the most.
Okay.
C, the one to move all staff on the third floor. And I'm not a designer, but obviously I would leave more of the, like the second floor, what we're trying to solve, which is the separation of the spaces as well as sound control as more a focus for design, I guess, elements. But just initially and conceptually, I like C.
I like C. That's helpful, yeah. All right, great. More to come. We need to learn the new business. Is that your director succession plan? So I do not plan to be peeled off anytime soon.
Good plan.
And, or to win the lottery because I don't ever buy lottery tickets. As you guys have noted in the last several reviews of the, how can I think of what it's called? In the Pro Capita grant review of serving our public, there it is. One of the things that we have not been able to say, yes, we absolutely are totally in compliance, is having a succession plan. And so I put one together. You know, Kelly, Anna, Becky have all reviewed it. This is a draft plan. My plan is to take you, to bring a fully, you know, finalized one after I get any feedback or changes you would like. The finalized one next month will include all of the detail that's in the appendices that would have all of that key information and contacts and all of that stuff. But I didn't put that all in there for now. So there's essentially three different options to explore, which is a short-term absence, a long-term absence, and then a permanent change with the departure of an executive director. And it's pretty, it's a pretty simple plan because it shouldn't have to be overly arduous. I'm happy to go through any parts or answer any questions. Right here, what you guys would like to change or adapt.
That's very good. And you're right. You don't need a 50-page document for this. The framework, the getting the board the proper authority, set out kind of the large scale way to handle it. I think the appendices in particular, which you're just telling us what's going to be in them all, would be very useful.
Yeah. Kathy Parker, my co-author and I created a template that I just used for this. And one of the things that she has done since retiring in 2018 is serve as interim director. And so she knows all the pain points. So every time she goes to a new library and we, she experiences some other piece of information that has been impossible to find. She's like, we need to add it. So this has been updated. And now we're getting the benefit of all of her interim experience and pain points.
I think it's, keep it simple. Makes good sense.
Are there any parts that any board members would like to see changed in terms of how we're approaching or the decision-making processes?
As I said, one thing I liked about it was it didn't nail down every little detail because you can't know exactly what the situation's actually going to be. So saying things like, the board has the authority to decide on an extra compensation is the appropriate way to handle this and not X amount of compensation.
And my plan would be that annually, when we do my review, that that would be a perfect opportunity to just review this as part of that process to see if any changes need to be made. Hopefully not, because again, trying to keep it the framework and not every single little detail. So it sounds like everyone is good with it and I can bring it back. No? Yay, Jay.
Well, I'm looking at temporary unplanned absence, short term.
Yes.
And that final paragraph, it says that the acting executive director is new to their position.
Yes.
I think that's presuming though that the acting executive director is the assistant director. But it then talks about appointing.
Oh, that's an excellent point.
I think it would read easier or, you know, more clear if you just said that the assistant director is new to their position.
Yeah. Or to say if the acting executive director is fairly, is new. Oh, yeah, you're right. No, I see what you're saying.
Right above the order is assistant director first.
Yes.
And then in the paragraph, it talks about elevating the finance and operations or services to assist the assistant director.
And I think it would also hold true though, so I'll have to figure out a different way to word it, that if, like, let's say Kelly won the lottery and left us. And Anna moved to Fiji because Ron decided that that was what he needed. And so then if we have a new finance and operations director that has only been here a few months, that that would also be problematic. If, like, if any of these are new. My hope is that that won't ever be the case because Kelly and Anna have sworn a blood oath. No. But like, yes, I will figure out a different way to word it that.
I see what you're saying. You're saying you, I mean, you're assuming if all three of them are all.
Right. And if all three were gone, then probably it is the end of the world and we should all be concerned.
Well, I think maybe the way that you worded it in K was say, if the person in the paragraph above elevated to the role of acting director is new, then it may be split among two or more of the persons named.
Perfect. Thank you, Attorney Jay. I know. Any other comments or suggestions, changes? I think it really easy. So if you, if anything does occur to you, please don't hesitate to let me know before the next board meeting and I'll be happy to make those changes. Then this fall, we'll be able to say yes to everything in serving our public.
No closed session tonight. So moving on to agenda building. On the list, we have the detailed statement of all receipts and expenditures for the previous six months, starting the discussion on the levy. Executive Director Gold check-in, the Civic Hybrid, which sounds like a Honda situation. Civic Hybrid presentation. How do you say that out loud? I don't think that. Civic Hybrid presented presentation.
Oh, yeah.
And the EDI Pulse survey Q2 presentation. Anything else anyone would like to consider adding to the agenda for next month?
Would you maybe have Commissioner Britton here?
Yes.
Just to know again, because it will take a ton.
And we also, I'll bring stuff on the Civic, Civic meeting room. These inch of stuff. And hopefully maybe even a data dashboard proposal. We're talking with the dating, it's tomorrow, so we'll see. I did want to also mention that in September, we are not going to be live streaming the board meeting. Our regular live streamer is very luckily going to be on a wonderful vacation and we decided to not try and replace perfection. Because then we're going to just record and post after the fact. And so it will still be recorded. And so it will still be recorded, we just won't be live streaming in September. But next month, still live streaming, so still a chance for viral. Anything else for the agenda?
Then I will adjourn the meeting at 8:31 PM.